... If you call a meeting to order, please stand and sit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming tonight. We have no visitors wishing to speak. Don't believe... Do we have any special committee?
Why, yes. As you can see by the agenda, the dozen nine, ten policies that you had to read through, the policy plan, we are on quarterly meeting schedule and reviewed a bunch of revised policies for your people.
I would just like to thank the public for coming out to vote. We passed our budget by the biggest percentage, I think, in Western New York at eighty-seven percent. So, thank you very much. That was... We appreciate that. We also welcome... We will be welcoming two new board members that we voted on our meeting in July. And we did pass our capital reserve. So, that was all positive. I can tell you, myself, Mr. Pennella, and Mr. Pigeon attended a SARD dinner, which is the Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner, a couple of weeks ago, where we got to... We went to the Millennium with Clara Schaefer's here. Claire Wanzer and I here see it. I saw his name. I don't know if he's here or not. But... And I got to hear all the wonderful achievements of all the students across Western New York. So, it was quite a nice time and it was very nice to sit with all the students and talk to them. I also just want to mention that our next meeting, I want to just take a few minutes and we're going to go over our... The board goals before we close out the school year. It should be our next meeting. So, just if you guys want to review those or even sit... Part of it was anything, you know, some professional development and stuff. I know we've all attended things, so just go through that stuff. So, with that, I will turn over to you.
Great. Thank you. First item on the superintendent's report is Mr. Pigeon and his pathfinders to recognize our Students of the Month for... And Teachers of the Month for three months. So, welcome. And we're excited to hear about all the wonderful things our young men and women are doing in our high school.
Thank you very much. It's always a great pleasure to shine a spotlight on the great achievements that are going on at Amber Central High School, both with our Students of the Month and our Teacher of the Month. It's always a great and fitting tribute at the end of the year to put an end cap on what has been a wonderful year. So, without further ado, I'll ask our Pathfinder Task Force to start the presentations.
Hi, everyone. I'm Aleah Taveri. And I'm going to be reading March's Student Teacher of the Month. So, I nominated Cameron Sullivan for Student of the Month for March. I think that Cameron is an excellent choice for Student of the Month. She's an incredible athlete who just signed with Philadelphia University for lacrosse. She's worked very hard to be the best she can in every sport she plays. She participates in lacrosse, basketball, swimming, soccer, and golf, proving that she's willing to be versatile. Cameron is also doing very well in school. She's been doing especially well in college pre-calculus. Cameron had a difficult time in pre-calculus initially, but through hard work, Cameron has gotten her grade up significantly and now has a much better understanding of the subject. Socially, Cameron is a caring friend who encourages her friends to excel at everything they do. She consistently cares about all of her friends and is an excellent choice for Student of the Month. Congratulations, Cameron, for being chosen as one of March's Students of the Month.
Sorry to make you feel bad, Sam.
Congratulations.
And we also have Mr. Eric Zobel, who was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Mr. Gregory Pigeon and Mr. Dave Manzel. Mr. Pigeon states that Mr. Zobel has always been a catalyst for building a positive professional culture among his peers and in our school. He's often the pragmatic voice of reason when it comes to moving forward on programmatic needs in the building or organizing fun activities for the staff. His students often describe him as the most kind and patient teacher I have ever had and so passionate about his subject of physics. Mr. Manzel states that Mr. Zobel is passionate about teaching physics and truly cares about the success of his students. He is able to apply physics to students' everyday lives through hands-on activities and real-life examples. Mr. Zobel works hard to make sure his students understand the wide range of college and career opportunities available to students taking courses in the physical sciences. Mr. Zobel is also a building representative for the AEA and also makes time to listen to other teachers' troubles or concerns. In his free time, Mr. Zobel spends time with his wife and three daughters and he helps coach his daughter's softball team. Congratulations, Mr. Zobel, as being chosen as one of Amber's Teachers of the Month for March.
Hi, I'm Molly Nelson and I'll be presenting the Teacher of the Month for March and the Student of the Month for April. Ms. Anne Fromello was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Mr. Dave Manzel and Mr. Ed Berger. Mr. Manzel and Mr. Berger state that Ms. Fromello is a teaching assistant that helps several students in Mr. Manzel's and Mr. Berger's Regent's Chemistry classes. She works diligently completing notes and worksheets so she is always prepared to help her students with their assignments. She brings tremendous energy to class each day and is a consummate professional that pays attention to detail. It is clear that Ms. Fromello enjoys her job and in turn makes it very enjoyable to work with her. Her son graduated from Amber's High School and was an excellent student in Honors Chemistry and Physics. Ms. Fromello has an enthusiastic and positive influence in the classroom environment. The students in Mr. Manzel's and Mr. Berger's classroom learn how to accept and rise to challenges by watching how Ms. Fromello reacts to unfamiliar situations and concepts. She is an accessible, supportive, and most of all, real. Thank you, Ms. Fromello, Mr. Manzel, and Mr. Berger for all your hard work and dedication. Congratulations, Mrs. Fromello, for being chosen as March's Teacher of the Month. All right. Miles Dzidorczek was nominated as a Student of the Month by Mr. Dennis Bauer, Ms. Sherry Surzak, and Ms. Kim King. Mr. Bauer states that Miles is a willing contributor to classroom discussion. His thoughts are intelligent, creative, and often humorous. He brings his same combination of skills to small group activities. Ms. Surzak states that Miles is one of our Amherst's to lead. He has demonstrated high intellectual ability coupled with high integrity and character. He works hard for all his achievements and is mature beyond his years. It has been a pleasure getting to know Miles over the past three years. She is very proud of him and Student of the Month is well deserved. Ms. King states Miles has a positive, friendly attitude every day. He's an extremely hard worker, but also manages to add a little humor to class. He works very well with others and is always willing to contribute to discussions. Ms. King is really happy to have had the pleasure of having Miles in my class this year. Congratulations, Miles, for being chosen as one of April's Student of the Month.
Okay. Well, I have one for April for Ms. Allison Boyer for Teacher of the Month. Ms. Allison Boyer was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Ms. Ann Shelkoff and Ms. Kelly Moranto. Ms. Shelkoff states that she has very much enjoyed working with Allison this year in the reading program. She brings a great work ethic and enthusiasm to the course. She is always willing to jump in and create materials or think outside of the box if needed. She's always smiling and ready to go. Ms. Moranto stated that Magistrav... I don't know how to speak. Is that a Latin thing? Sorry. Allison Boyer is our new dynamic Latin and reading teacher at ACHS this year. She comes to us with tons of energy and ideas. Who else would be able to make Latin relevant to so many students by connecting this seemingly outdated language with their modern interests like Harry Potter and Percy Jackson? Ms. Boyer also takes time on the weekend to help students navigate the Santa Men as well as during her first year at ACHS, tackle hosting the Santa Men. Grazie, Magistrav, for all that you do. Congratulations, Ms. Boyer, for being chosen as one of April's Teachers of the Month.
Hi, I'm Angela Girth. Mr. Michael Goss was nominated as a Teacher of the Month by Liam Montgomery. Liam states that he had Mr. Goss as a teacher for two years and can honestly say he's one of the most influential teachers he's had throughout his years at school. Mr. Goss's knowledge on things, his humor, brings to life history in such a comedic way that students can't help but want to know more about the topic. He keeps his students engaged and aware of the world around them. His teaching style has made Liam fall in love with history and want to continue to branch off into different aspects of world history he taught in class. Anyone who has had Mr. Goss as a teacher will agree with Liam when he says his classes are not one you want to skip because it's like missing the chapter of a story. Overall, his humor and engaging teaching style makes him very deserving of Teacher of the Month. Congratulations, Mr. Goss, is being chosen as one of the Amherst Teacher of the Month for April.
Hi, I'm Teresa Girth. Emily Aguna was nominated as Student of the Month by Mr. Justin Pommel. Mr. Pommel stated that Emily Aguna brings everything she has to the table every day. Involved in a myriad of highly academic classes, after-school activities, musical ensembles, and athletics, Emily never lets anyone see anything but her very best each day, which is an endlessly positive attitude, support for her teachers, leadership in the classroom, a desire for personal success, all wrapped up behind a great smile. A member of Corral Apparata Sweet Sixteens Orchestra, Emily has never missed an opportunity to challenge herself by auditioning for Nissmo and/or Al County. She is always willing to help in models' ideal ensemble membership each and every day, no matter what pressure she may be under, to maintain her exceptional GPA and rigorous schedule. Congratulations, Emily, for being chosen as one of April's Students of the Month.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Haley Doria. And I will also be reading for Clara Schaefer as one of May's Students of the Month. Clara Schaefer was nominated as a Student of the Month by Ms. Kelly Moranto and Mr. Justin Pommel. Ms. Moranto states... This is French. Intelligent, curious... Oh, I think it means curious, amusant, and chouette. These are all words that come to mind when I think of Clara Schaefer. Clara is a very multi-talented young woman. She is intelligent, is curious about many things, is able to sing and dance, is able to perform in the operetta flawlessly, and can have a conversation with anyone on pretty much any topic one can give her on a moment's notice. She is one-of-a-kind student that many teachers dream to have in their classes. She's a kind person and a friend to many others in her classes. She shares her knowledge with others, not just telling or instructing, but in a teaching way, so they may also understand what she knows. She is a pleasure to have in class and will be missed in school by all. Mr. Pommel states that Clara Schaefer has served the operetta as assistant producer, managing a myriad of details behind the scenes that make the operetta such a special student-centered activity. She puts in many hours working on patron sales, ads, program details, ordering T-shirts, putting together the company party, all while acting and starring in the production, where she consistently delivers creative, well-thought-out performances. Outside of operetta, Clara has starred in every drama club performance, is a member of the Concert Corral and Symphony Orchestra, enrolled in multiple AP-level courses, and has represented Amherst's Exquis Bowl among many other accomplishments. Congratulations, Clara, for being chosen as one of May's Students of the Month.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Pathfinders for their leadership. What you do in our building is very, very important and the really spotlight that you shine on your peers as well as your teachers is really something that brings a special touch to our building. So, I want to thank you for your leadership all year long. And for those seniors, thank you for two years of your leadership as being a Pathfinder. And congratulations to our students and teachers. Thank you very much.
Parents, thank you for giving us the privilege and responsibility for working with your children. It really is a tremendous work that we have here at school and you have wonderful kids because you've put in the effort to be great parents. So, thank you. Teachers, thank you for consistently going above and beyond and doing what's best for kids all the time. It seems fitting to mention that I was recently notified by the New York State Education Department that our Amherst Central High School for 2017-18 has been given the status of a reward school statewide. So, we are one of 185 schools, and that's not just high schools. One of 185 schools statewide that is being recognized for consistently high levels of achievement over the last two years, fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen school year. And we are only one of eight schools in Western New York to receive the reward school designation. So, Mr. Pigeon.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
But you were not going to get to do it.
To do what?
Mommy.
So, the next item on the superintendent's report.
What one is our neighbor? Who's this?
So, I'm pleased to welcome our internal claims auditor, Mr. Richard Foley, for his annual presentation. He has some good information to share with us about our internal controls. So, please.
Thank you, Mr. Pennella. And good evening, board members. I'm just going to give you a little refresher, a quick refresher on the role of the claims auditor, what I do, what I look for, and my findings. Claims auditing is a financial bonus function that ensures that payments made by the school for purchase of goods and services are valid. Educational law requires an audit of all claims before payments are made. This is basically an unfunded mandate that I know districts allow. But it is a requirement that started about twelve years ago in response to a misappropriation of funds in a downstate school district by major proportions. Claims auditor works independently of the district's operations. You cannot have someone who works in the business office be a claims auditor and treasurer, purchasing manager. You want to be as independent and separate from the operation as possible so that there's no conflict or appearance of conflict of interest. Claims auditor reports directly on the Board of Education. Superintendent and the claims auditor are the only people that directly report through the Board of Ed. It's an annual appointment by the Board of Ed, usually at the reorganization meeting. And the claims auditor ensures that payment for all claims are valid based upon proper authorization and documentation. It's basically another set of eyes and it adds another layer of protection of the district's resources. I just want to go over what a purchase order is. Basically, it's a basic form that's used to help ensure that goods and services have been properly authorized and pre-approved prior to payment. It includes a description, a very detailed description, and the cost of items to be purchased and what budget expense code will be charged that will be encumbered. So, it locks in the funds in a particular budget code before purchasing is made. Thus, it confirms that adequate funds are available in the budget in that budget code before the purchase is approved. So, you have what's called a financial software system called Wincap. And if there... Somebody wants to purchase something a thousand dollars and there's five hundred dollars in the account, then the budget code, the right flag goes up. And then you have to transfer funds from some other code. Okay, what do I look for? My checklist, pretty much. I work about one day per week, about four or five hours. And I get a stack of claims that need to be paid. And in that stack, in that review, I verify that each claim has proper supporting documentation such as receipts, invoices, purchase order, that kind of thing. And I make sure that the purchase order contains agrees... What's being purchased agrees with the invoice that the vendor has sent to the district. So, those should match. I look to see the date of the purchase order versus the date of the invoice. The purchase order should be before the invoice. Occasionally, there is a purchase order I see that was prepared after you've seen my invoices. I verify the mathematical accuracy of the invoices and I make sure that sales tax is excluded from any invoice. Nonprofit governmental, that must be excluded from sales tax. Continuing with the checklist. I look for confirmation that goods and services were received, were actually received or completed. Example, we'd be looking at the packing slips to the invoices and even a signed signature by an employee that goods or services were provided. A claim meets legal competitive bidding requirements according to the New York State General Municipal Law. If you purchase something over twenty thousand dollars, you have to go to competitive outside bidding. And it's thirty-five thousand for construction projects. And you have a big capital project in the initial stages. So, in the coming months, I will be seeing competitive bidding for an HBC or a construction project as it goes along. About one thing I want to mention about the twenty thousand for purchases. One trick district might try to do would be, you know, if you had twenty-five thousand dollars of something you want to purchase, it would really be on a go-up. Competitive bidding, district could try to cut that in half and segregate it out from twelve thousand five hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. That is not allowed. So, that's something actually the controller's office looks at when they conduct audits on the school districts. Other things I look for, make sure that expenditures comply with board policies. Example, conference reimbursements and meals and auto expenses comply with the policies, such as the IRS mileage rates. So, I look for that. I make sure that checks are issued in sequential order. Each... Every two weeks, a check run is done by the financial officer. And I match up the checks that were issued and printed and sold. I match those checks with a payment schedule that I looked at originally a few days earlier. And those should match. And I look to make sure that the beginning check number in the current batch is sequential to the last check number on the previous check run. And if there's a gap, that means there were some checks issued without my authorization. And I also look to ensure that the checks issued agrees with the audit payment schedule. These two, last two checks are pretty important because a couple of years ago, another school district nearby, they caught their accounts payable for misappropriating funds. And what she was doing was paying the personal utility bills through the district. So, when I got... You know, when I heard about that, I'm thinking to myself, how... They have a claims auditor. How did that get through? The only way it could have gotten through was if it included somebody else or the claims auditor didn't check these last two items. So, that happened about two years ago. So, I make sure we had to check those. All right, so it's never going to happen as long as I can find something very good. And each month, I prepare a claims audit report that goes into the Board of CAC. And it's a report of the findings each month. I have page one, the late purchase orders that were issued after the invoice date. The second page is another finding that I found. The claims audit report contains thirty, forty, fifty pages of your checks that were cut. And that warrant record contains the name of the payee, check number, the date, amount, account code that was used, and my signature at the end of each report. Okay, so I compiled some numbers of the last eleven months of this school year. And from July first to May thirty-first, the district issued twenty-seven hundred manual checks totaling eighteen million dollars. These checks are issued every two weeks. And any amount that's over five thousand dollars requires two signatures, either the treasurer and the business manager. Electronic transfers, a small number but large amount, twenty. Twenty transfers amounting to three million dollars. These are payments for your bonds, your interest, and the principal to the bank. And this also includes transfers to the New York State Retirement System for employee retirement and also for a freebie in employee contributions to the investment company. Okay, and lastly, the other last form of payments are Visa cards. Sixty-five payments totaling only nineteen thousand dollars. Visa card payments are usually for minor amounts for... For example, if you make a hotel reservation online with a credit card, usually meals for out-of-district conferences, workshop registration fees, and sometimes online purchases that require a credit card. Most credit cards are highly secured in the business office and there's a log every time it's used, every time a person asks for the card with some information. Okay. And then conclusions. As a general rule, purchasing policies and procedures are generally being followed. On occasion, purchase orders are late after they're prepared after the invoice was... Came into the district.
Was that because of maybe an emergency situation?
Yeah, that's a common reason, yeah. Maintenance. Something you got to buy a car quick, fix something, yeah. There's also other ones that are... It's not... It was not one department. It's about one and a half percent of the total purchases has a late purchase order. So, ninety-eight and a half percent of the time, all districts are going to have this. But we try to minimize it as much as possible. And in a few instances, a couple, I think two, there was two or three, there was no confirmation that documented that was received. But I got confirmation by someone involved. There was no problem there afterwards. But, so anyway. All in all, you're doing a fine job. There's nothing major to report here. Thank goodness. So, good passing.
Great.
Thank you for enjoying. Thanks for your oversight. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, can I just ask a couple of quick questions? So, there's thirty-some million dollars in our budget that's not included in this? What things would not be? So, that's all payroll?
Payroll, salaries and benefits, I do not audit.
Okay. And then, a couple people had this. The electronic transfers, there's only twenty? And is there a benefit to using manual checks, or are we just behind the times?
Um, well, they're easy to audit, that's for sure. From my standpoint, I love, I like manual checks, but.
Yeah.
Because when you do electronics, they usually, sometimes they're done before you see them. The way to the future could, there are some districts moving slowly in that direction of electronic payments to all vendors. There are some problems, um, from an accounting standpoint, bookkeeping standpoint with that, you know, because, you know, things are, we have to scan everything using the computer, the one thing. You have to scan invoices or print them off the computer from vendors that come in. But, um, I don't know if.
You can't just keep an electronic copy of the. There's no way you keep an electronic copy of it, so we don't have one?
Yeah. The state likes, the Controller's Office likes original documents, original invoices when they conduct their audits. But as, as, as we get more and more into that, into electronics, I'm sure that the policies and regulations guiding that. But it's certainly something to look into, I think.
Just curious.
Rochester area, you know, if you move in that direction. We'd like to. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your oversight. Much appreciated. Uh, the last piece within the Superintendent's Report is an update on what we're now calling the 2016 Capital Project. So as you all may recall, our community overwhelmingly supported a capital project back in December of 2016. And since that vote, that positive vote, we've been feverishly working on planning and to move forward with that project. So I've invited some representatives from Young and Right Architectural to talk about some of the plans, the phasing, the timeline and the plans, as well as Dr. Ilg and Mr. Rampado are here. If there are any questions about Phase One as it relates to site work that are asked for clarification. But really, it's just a general update for the board as well as the public as it relates to the progress that's being made since that vote.
Thank you. Because I'm thinking I was not accomplishing that. I do appreciate, you know, putting somebody a little quieter between us. I always hate to follow the cheers and the applause of the teachers and the students. So ours is just an update, and we're going to talk a little bit about it. I have Tim with me, who's our landscape architect. Jim decided that if you had very difficult questions on the site, he needed Tim here, so he brought Tim. Tim's not going to speak too much. Jackie's going to be here. Jim's got some personal things, or he would be here also. But, so, just to start, we presented the schedule the last, before the project went out to vote, and there were three phases. Because of the fact it's twenty-nine million, we broke it up into three phases. The first phase I'm going to talk about is turf, track, tennis courts, and a little bit of work at each of the buildings to talk about that and where we are in Phase One. Jackie's going to talk about where we are in Phase Two, and Phase Three kind of follows. When we complete Phase Two, Jackie will move on to Phase Three, and we'll talk about that. So if there's questions at any time, just feel free. The first phase is really the site phase, and that's kind of my piece I'm talking about. The graphics, Kyle, you've been working with Tim for a while. So the graphics are kind of the turf field concept on the bottom there. We have talked about increasing security around. There's been a lot of discussion about the fence, with how tall the fence wants to be and how much security with allowing people to still access the site, but have it more secure. So those are some of the things we've worked on site-wise. Plan-wise, you begin to see the five tennis courts moved off the property line, the new access from the parking lot, and obviously the track, the turf, and the tennis courts will all be done as part of this phase. And before I turn it over to Jackie, does anybody have any questions for Tim? See if I did that. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Jackie. You want the button there?
Okay. As you can see, Phase Two actually touches all four buildings in the district, but the big focus is on the high school, where we're either going to be replacing or renovating, you know, all the items listed there. So the windows, music rooms, HVAC systems, the main entrance, lockers, doors, corridors. At the middle school, we're just doing window replacements, the parking lot and tennis courts. And then at Smallwood and Windermere, it's just going to be replacing some old piping within the building and repaving those tennis courts as well. Just to give you an update about our design process so far. Really, what we focused on is collecting information from the departments and the people who are really going to be interacting with these systems or spaces. So this is an example of what we did with the music department. On the right, you can see we issued a bunch of surveys that just asked the music department, what works about your space? What doesn't work? And what's your vision for the future? Where do you want to take this? And then on sort of the nuts and bolts end of things, we're collecting an inventory list of how many instruments do you have? What kind of stuff do you need to store? Where are your coral robes going to go? You know, how, really figuring out what stuff they have and not just how they lose the space. So based off of that information, we went back to the office and developed three different options that we presented to them for the music room, or the music rooms. And the first option, just to kind of summarize it, we focused on maintaining a buffer between all three music rooms and filling that buffer with practice spaces, storage, and offices. The second option actually maximizes room space by pushing all of that stuff forward. And the third option.
That's, option one was the fat walls between the rooms and stuff.
Yep.
Taking over spaces that was a storage.
Yeah, and that's going to be in all three options. We're taking that for the music department. And then the last one really explored the idea of combining the band and orchestra room into one big room that was really more acoustically optimized for, you know, a music program that size. We also produced some renderings that brought it into 3D because sometimes it's a little bit difficult to transition from the floor plans to be able to see what you're going to get, you know, what a space is really going to look like, what it's going to feel like, what the scale of it's going to be. So we did that for all three of the options. And then it turns out that this is actually the one that was favored by the music department pretty much unanimously. This idea of having that buffer space between, you know, optimizing it for the storage and the practice rooms and their offices. And we're also doing a little bit more to kind of, you know, reclaim those old instrument storage things in the locker room. So it's really just a creative way of figuring out where they can put all of their stuff and, you know, still maximize the space that they have for, you know, the actual bodies in the classroom.
And just a little note about the phasing before we move on to Phase Three. We're really looking at construction over the next four summers, starting in 2018. So all the way through the summer of 2021. And given the fact that roughly twenty million dollars of the project centers around one building, you know, we really worked very closely with our construction management company, Turner, to ensure that we would have enough workforce and, and space to be able to accomplish the work that needed to be done. So you may recall, originally, our project was concluding in December of 2020. We actually worked with our financing department to ensure consistent flow of building aid and pushed that timeline out till 2021 to ensure that the heavy construction of Phases Two and Three would be accommodated over two summers as opposed to one, given the magnitude of it at the high school. So Phase One, the plans, if they haven't been already, are close to being submitted to State Ed and will focus on the turf field and track replacement, really. Phase Two is what Jackie just presented. That's, these are the preliminary designs that we're working on. And I think, and when you look at the timeline here, our goal is to submit those to State Ed for review in the fall of eighteen. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Um, I think we were submitting them to SED.
January of eighteen.
Yeah.
January of eighteen. And then Phase Three will, will follow. So unfortunately, the bad news from State Ed recently has been that their timeline is around thirty-six months for review. So I'm sorry, thirty-six weeks for review.
But they're getting up, that's almost getting up to nine to ten months.
Right.
That we're looking at. We had initially budgeted for about eight months, even though they were at about five months. And the number of projects in the backlog, I get a weekly update as to where they are, and they were as low as two-hundred-and-twenty in their backlog, and they're now at seven-hundred-and-forty in their backlog. So there is, there's been some positive, I, I, somebody asked me why this happened. It happened because of Excel Aid, which happened fifteen years ago. And fifteen years ago, school districts all got Excel Aid, and so they got, they did a lot of projects. Well, the Excel Aid is coming off. School districts are able to do projects again, and they can address some of their maintenance, and they did a building condition survey in 2015. So there are a lot of projects that are being turned in.
Yeah, so although the Phase Two construction will probably not begin until summer of 2020, the, or late in 2019, there's an awful lot of planning that's already begun for Phase Two. And Phase Three right now seems a little bit far off in the distance, but it's certainly on our list.
Let's ask a quick question about Phase Two. Do we, um, do we know if we're approved to put in new windows at the high school yet? Or we won't know that until we pick our windows? Like, how does that work?
We, we will work with SHPO to submit a window that they will accept. It's not going to be necessarily, we'll pick it, we're going to work with them, because SHPO will have some say on that.
So they kind of already know what's happening and.
Yes.
Yeah, our plan is to contact them to get feedback on what they might accept, but unfortunately, they don't review it until we submit it.
They don't, they don't really give us parameters to design two, really. And we have to design it first with what we think they're going to accept and then have them review it. So it'd be nice if there were some guidelines ahead of time, but fortunately, it's not that way.
Believe it or not, this is a photograph, right Peggy?
It was.
It was a photograph that we put into some kind of weird Photoshop thing and made it into a sketch. A lot of the high school work, a lot of the design work, even on the lower level, cafeteria, home of careers, art rooms, are all going to be part of the next phase, which is Phase Three. And that will start when we complete Phase Two. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. It's kind of a quick project update. I wanted to let you know we are submitting Phase One, we're in the middle of Phase Two, and we're on schedule. It's the state that's falling a little behind schedule, but we're going to take that into account, so.
Just curious, was there any, any in-depth discussion among the music faculty and the high school administration on the other two options for the music rooms? Or was it clearly, they wanted to keep it the way it was?
I think within the department itself, they had a, it was their favorite one. I think there were a lot of other people in the meeting that maybe had different opinions, but, you know, it's really, you know, those were, that was their preference. So, you know, we're kind of developing ideas off of what they wanted.
Yeah, one of the most significant improvements that will come to the music rooms is a flat floor. Because currently, there's built-in risers into the floor, which takes up a significant amount of space. So they are gaining, in some cases, up to five hundred square feet per room just by having the floor flat, which is, yeah, which is increasing a significant amount of space for things like digital recording, soundproof rooms, practice rooms. You know, that, there's some genuine excitement by the faculty around the design up to this point, which is, again, very preliminary.
The hallway width will be the same between the auditorium and the music room?
Yes, the hallway width will be the same. We're talking about the lockers in the hallway, whether or not they'll be replaced, refurbished, repurposed. I know there was a significant amount of discussion about storage for sheet music. So that is something that's a high priority. We've also had some discussion about whether or not the odd may come into play depending upon contingency and/or incidentals and how the project progresses. So we mentioned that, at, at the time that we presented the project, that our desire is to sort of over-design the project so that as we are monitoring the project and we see how it's progressing, we will know what we will be able to add if, in the event, financially, the opportunity presents itself.
Whoever knows the music rooms, that dates back to World War II. They've looked the same since then, so.
Yeah, the product that comes out of those rooms is certainly, surpasses the quality of them at this point. That's for sure. Yeah. So that is the update as it relates to the planning. I, I'd like to, you know, recognize the board may not have had the opportunity to formally meet Mr. Rampado, other than when he was appointed. But Mr. Rampado is in the crowd. He's our new Director of Facilities, started in the fall. He's been a tremendous asset to us along the line with the Capital Project. He's previously been an architect in Jerry's shoes.
You don't take that away.
He's also.
He's still an architect.
It's a life title.
He graduated. He's previously worked as an architect on a project, as well as the clerk of the works for a smaller project in his previous district. So lucky to have him on our team and the oversight he provides for this, is providing for this project. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And go to the board meetings.
So that's the conclusion of the Superintendent's Report.
And we will need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion for new business. Items F1, A through Z, F2, A through P, and F3, B, C, D, E, G, and H.
All right, we have a second. All right, all those in favor of approving new business items? One, A through Z, F2, A through P, and F3, B, C, D, E, G, and H. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven to zero. This facility, do we have any follow-up action items?
I just have one that you intend to review the board goals if it has.
Okay. Fantastic. We will then need a motion to convene to an executive session.
I think motion may convene to an executive session for discussions of employment of a particular individual.
Not second that?
Co-seconded by.
Great, all those in favor of convening to an executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.